I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, we'll go ahead and call it to order. There has, prior to the agenda being presented, we've made a couple of additions proposed. We're going to make action item A, the approval of the COVID equality funding. And then B will be personnel and coaching reports. Do I have any more? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Alright, good. Ms. Tanner, thank you. Consent agenda, approval of regular session minutes for September 21st in the, in 2020, and approval of fundraising request. Do you have a motion to approve consent?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Alright. Discussion agenda, discussion policy 7620 payroll deduction vendors. Ms. Moore. Yeah, I have a feeling we're leaning towards Ms. Moore.
As we were working with, uh, here's what goes along with products for employees. One of the things that they mentioned that they would, could offer would be some legal assistance for our employees and that is in your package.
Ms. Moore, if you'll wait to continue talking till you get back to the microphone, please.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's alright. We're just running a new system here.
So, the legal resources was new. So, I looked at the policy and I realized that there have been several things that we've added in deductions and the policy had not been updated. For example, we've done United Way, some group vision, some long-term disability, YMCA, Horseman Auto, 457B. So, we just felt like we need to review this policy and update it to cover the deductions that we are allowing for our employees. Dr. Rice, anything you want to add to that?
No, ma'am. You summed it up very well.
So, we're just modifying our policy 7620, so it's got a set for 30 days prior to activation.
Just to agree with what we're really doing, it's just-
Got a perk.
Okay. And on that blank line there, uh, we'd like to add the Director of Finance. So, where it says any employee who would like the board to consider additional salary deductions should contact the Director of Finance. And then we want the board to consider adding these to our list so that we can continue those payroll deductions and then including the new ones.
Okay. Ms. Knight?
When all of those are listed on the third page here, the additions.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions?
No questions.
Ms. Messick?
I did want to ask one question. Uh, the tax shelter annuities and deferred annuities, do, uh, do people, do employees still have tax shelters that they can, uh, have deducted from their salaries? Uh, do they have to have that approved by you? Does the tax shelter person has to come in and be approved by you?
We just have approved vendors that's been approved by the board that we allow. We do not allow this any vendor to come in.
Right.
And the employees, we give those vendors an opportunity to reach out to our employees at least once a year. If we did not have the COVID, they would probably just do that as a group meeting at school, but they'll probably be more virtual. So, we allow that. And then all during the year, any employee can contact those representative and sign up if they choose to do so.
Okay. Do you, um, do you know about how many vendors we have that do that?
We have, uh, I, Horseman, ING, and Violet, and the Four LK.
Okay. So, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Ms. Tanner, any questions from you?
No, sir.
Alright. Thank you, Ms. Moore. We'll let that one set for 30. Discussion of athletics update. Dr. Taylor, I think this is probably in here, by the way.
Yes, sir. Wanted to give the board an update of both middle school and high school athletics. A few weeks ago, the Foothills Middle School Athletic member, conference members had a virtual meeting where we discussed and pretty much finalized a, an amended middle school athletic schedule. It will be a shortened season. A typical middle school season is approximately 14 events. This is going to be now the seven this year. And there will be no tournaments, no championships this year, and some of the seasons have been rearranged. For example, the first will run from November the 4th through December the 17th. That will include cross-country soccer and girls' and boys' tennis. The winter season from January the 4th through February the 12th will be boys' and girls' basketball. And then we have a fall season that runs February the 15th through April the 1st. That will be for football primarily, football, volleyball. And then we have a spring season that will run from April the 15th through May the 14th, which will include baseball, softball, track, golf, and wrestling. The decision to put wrestling, which is typically a winter sport, as far out as we could is because that is where young people have as much contact as anything. And to mirror the High School Athletic Association's decision, the decision was made to push that out as far as we could. Now, I will tell you that every conference member is in full agreement with this schedule. It has been advertised now in, in all three districts that are involved. We do not know how this is going to impact spectators. Spectators will be determined as the governor moves forward with his plans. So, at this time, the governor will allow 25 individuals, any persons inside and 50 outside. So, hopefully, that will change as we progress through the year. But right now, I cannot speak to the number of spectators that will be allowed. So, but that is what the season will look like. It's not a full season, but it's better than, than no season at all. So, we're very excited about that. Turn it over to section B. Real quick, are there any questions about the middle school portion?
Ms. Tanner, any questions?
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Looking real quick at the high school section. Again, reduced number of contests. For example, football season is typically 11 games with an endowment. That's now down to seven. Volleyball typically plays anywhere from 21 to 23, 24 matches. They're now at 14. There is going to be a playoff bracket for each sport. It will be reduced this year. And some of the seasons have been rearranged as well. For example, looking, and I won't go through all of them, but looking at the high school amended calendar, it starts November the 4th as well with cross-country and volleyball in that first season. Then you've got, moving on to, I'll skip over to December the 7th through February the 19th will be basketball. Then skipping down to, for example, football is going to be something played in the early spring. First practice was February the 8th, first contest February the 26th. Last regular season game, April the 9th. State championship will be May the 8th. So, you can see how this coming year, or this year is going to be somewhat different, but we are excited about young people having the opportunity to, to participate in athletics. Much like the, uh, the middle school portion, we are not aware of how this is going to look for spectators as of yet.
Okay.
Any questions about the high school portion?
Ms. Knight?
No, sir.
Ms. Messick?
No.
Ms. Tanner?
No, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Driver's education update.
Want to also give the board, give the board a quick update on where we are with driver's education. We are now in the process of advertising our first face-to-face classes since February or early March of last year. And we are going to be advertising, if not already, no earlier than October the 12th. Classes will be limited to 25 persons. They will be held at north, south, and west. The social distancing requirements will be followed, guidelines will be followed. Masks will be required by students and teacher. And we are going to focus on those students who were impacted by COVID. So, for example, South Stokes had a class that had already registered that was getting ready to start March. We, the governor shut us down on the 13th, so that would have been, they would have started on March the 15th. But with COVID, that class did not, of course, did not get to take, take place. We did offer four sections of online or virtual training this summer. Anybody that was not able to do the virtual piece can now, we will work with them first to make sure they are not any farther behind than possible. And then, we will then begin advertising and going, following a typical enrollment process at that point.
Okay. Ms. Knight, any questions?
Uh, no, sir. I'm glad to hear we've given this opportunity back.
Ms. Messick?
Yes, I'm glad that driver's education will be viable again. And, uh, you know, our students rely on that, if I was so like, it was emotionally now when they turned 16.
Ms. Tanner?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Alright. Capital Project update. Away from Dr. Taylor and all the, ready to wonderful.
Yes, board members, uh, Ms. Boljack, she passed out a copy of the Capital Project update. When you look down, if there, if it's highlighted in yellow, that means it's complete. But South Stokes gym floor, we bid it out. We had a pre-bid on, uh, November the 25th. We're going to have to rebid that out. We only had one contractor attend the first pre-bid. Uh, we invited five, uh, contractors and only one showed up. But in talking with, uh, Ms. Cheek, she's wanting to do that starting February the 22nd. The roofs, all three of the roofs, they're still with the DPI engineer. Uh, the West Stokes chiller, South Stokes, uh, boiler, uh, for Autotech, and the Piney Grove burner, they're with the DPI engineer. And we plan to hold the pre-bid on those three projects on, uh, October the 15th. What we plan to do is the boiler and the burners at, uh, South and Piney Grove is looking at replacing those over the Christmas holiday. West Stokes chiller, I feel like once the weather gets cool, we could plan that at just about any time once, once the cool weather starts and swap that out in cool weather.
Hold on. Real quick, when did you say South is wanting to redo their floors?
Uh, February the 22nd. That's after basketball.
Unless they get past the first round. That's February 23rd. Or unless-
I said, I said, I mean, 20, 22nd. I'm sorry, I said 20, it's 22nd.
Uh, February?
Yeah, but February 23rd is still the first round of, we would work around.
Yeah, we'll make sure we put that in top top with the contractor.
And then, does wrestling, I'm just making sure we don't have any conflict.
Wrestling will be a spring sport. It'll be actually late spring at the high school level. And according to the-
I guess they could always do auxiliary.
Yes, that's what Ms. Cheek said.
Do we have potentially portable bleachers and case fans are allowed?
I don't know how much room they have between, we've got some, uh, tipping, what I call tip and roll. They're small bleachers that could possibly be put in there if it's enough room.
Okay.
We'll look into that, make sure we have that covered.
Okay. I just want to give everybody their opportunity. Okay.
Uh, on the second sheet, these are carryover projects. Again, everything in yellow is completed. The Mount Olive lights, uh, that material is on order. The West Stokes track, uh, they were actually out there last week putting down sod, so that's getting close to the end on it. The southeastern canopy, it's pretty much completed. We've just got to come back into a small section of concrete, but the shelter is in place. Are there any questions?
Ms. Knight?
Uh, number eight. So, the chiller, um, continuing to do fine, you know, like the daily restart or-
We're, we're still, we, we reset it weekly and in fact, I had Brady train up a few times to, to work on it.
Okay. And then from the time of the, um, bid, October 15th, what is the turnaround time? Is it six weeks? How long does it take them to build it?
Typically about six to eight weeks to build the chillers.
Okay, okay, so. It's not like months or anything. We're not going to worry about getting back into, you know.
No, no, it'll, it'll be, it'll be cold weather when we start replacing the chiller.
Okay. And then, what type of schedule does the engineer give you about number six and seven with the roofs on those two elementary schools?
His comment is, is, we're on his list. He hasn't given me a timeframe yet.
So, we don't know if it could be spring or-
Typically, we've done, the last ones we've done with him, uh, we've done them in, uh, February, March, kinda to, uh, get a better price. And we're actually looking into a different product. Dr. Taylor and I have had some discussion on North Stokes. Instead of putting a new roof on, it's a, it's not a roof coating. It's, it's like a flow-in-place roof. We're looking at that. It's a, it's a cost savings if we can do that.
And, um, it's, you know, no fault, uh, of ours, but we're hoping for a better experience than, you know, the mishaps with, um, Sandy Ridge or whatever.
True.
Okay, okay. So, still, we want to stay on the path with, uh, that engineering, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all.
Ms. Messick, any questions?
Uh, just one quick one. Um, how, how long is the wait period a lot of times for the DPI engineers? Do you have to like put in, um, a time schedule and wait our turn?
Yes, that's the way it works. And a lot of that got bottlenecked with the COVID because when the COVID first hit, Raleigh was one of the hotspots. They would not come out of Raleigh period, uh, even with the superintendent's, uh, permission. And even now, Dr. Rice had to send a letter, authorize and give them permission to come to Stokes County and work on these projects.
But even before that, it, it depended on the number of projects around the state. The first time we called them, they were here within a month.
Mm-hmm.
Then the next time, they said it'd be like six or eight months before they showed up. So, it just depends on how many projects different districts submit to what they're trying, and who gets on the list first. But as he said, COVID slowed everything down because they didn't go out for three or four months.
And that's one of the drawbacks of getting free engineering services, is you have-
Right, right.
Have to wait.
That, that's what my question really was. Is it worth waiting? I know it's free and we wanted, we did say we wanted the DPI engineers, you know, last year we said that. And, and we probably still do, but if we have to just keep waiting, are any of these roofs leaking? I mean, is, is North Stokes leaking badly?
Now, we've had some issues at, uh, Lawsonville. That's our number one roof. And we've, and each time we have an issue, we've had the roofers to go up and do a repair.
And then our number two is North Stokes.
Nancy Reynolds.
Oh, is it?
Mm-hmm.
I think what we would be prepared to do is if we run into a situation that is critical, that needs to be addressed immediately, we would come to Dr. Rice, share that, those concerns with Dr. Rice, and then reach out to you as, as a board and, and present those options to you.
Just see if we want to go with an engineering firm to do this.
So, here's a quick question then. What's it cost for a engineer advise what to cost for a repair?
Engineers, I'm trying to think of memory, is probably around $20,000.
How much are we paying per roof repair at, uh, North Stokes?
Typically, when they come out, it's somewhere around $350 to $450.
Okay.
For the estimate?
No, just for repairs.
Oh.
It's $350 to $450.
So, we can put the patch on the patch of the patch for $350 until we can get an engineer? Because we get out a lot of rain for that one.
And we, and we talk about the fact, is, is that delay going to wind up costing us more money in the long run versus-
Right.
Spending the money upfront. We, we look into those, yes, scenarios.
Yeah, if we're $3,000, that's one thing, $300,000.
We're, I know you're doing the best you can. I, I do, but I know a lot of, probably a lot of school systems are, are trying to get them. They probably don't have that many engineers they're sending out.
They don't. And typically, when we've been bid hours out, they're, he's considered that a small project of the work that we do when it comes to roofing.
Right.
Some of the bigger projects they do, they try to do those in the summertime, but where the hours are smaller project, we're kinda doing it in the off-season, so to speak, for roofing. And we typically get a better price, too.
So, you feel like it'll be pretty soon?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Ms. Tanner, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Alright.
Thank you, board member.
Thank you. Qualtrix survey.
Board, I'm pleased to tell you that we are ready to launch this Qualtrix survey that we talked about back in the spring. We are looking at the employee notification on the survey coming out the week of October 26th. That same week, you will get a video from the Qualtrix company through Ryan, Jolly Our contact person, which will give you instructions on how to access the dashboard and to help you with analyzing results. Then you will also get a follow-up email individually on instructions for how to go in and create your password to utilize that dashboard and analyze those survey results. The survey will actually launch the first two weeks in November, and it will take approximately 15 minutes for completion for each employee. And then they will get reminders throughout that two-week window. So, that, just wanted to give you a quick update. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Knight?
No, sir.
Ms. Messick?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Ms. Tanner, do you have any questions?
No, sir. Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome, Mrs. Tanner. Thank you, board.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Alright, relaunch 2020. Uh, board, uh, as I sent out the message on Friday, that we have watched the data for the three weeks that we've been in Plan B, discussed that data with the Health Department, and they said that we did not have any community spread, if you will, in our schools. Uh, people giving it to each other in our buildings. We have had some people affected. We also have started posting that data on our website. Uh, we started doing that on Friday, updated it this morning. Uh, I've given, those of you in, in the building tonight, a, a sample of what those pages say. But if you go to district information, under that is COVID information, and under that is the calendar of each month. Those are not cumulative calendars. That is what each month had. So, those were the positive test during the month of September, the positive test during the month of October, uh, so far, which was this week, as of this morning, and the positive results also in, in August. Uh, as of today, this morning, uh, we had one student who is still out testing positive. Everyone else has recovered and is back at school. And the student that is out is on Plan C, so that student has not been at school this year, uh, contacted it outside of school. Uh, currently, we have a total of four, uh, six staff members as of this evening that we are aware of who have tested positive. Only one of those is a classroom teacher. Uh, other, they others fill different roles in our district. Uh, so again, with talking with the Health Department, we felt confident, uh, as confident as we can be. I mean, understanding that if NFL players living in a bubble get COVID-19 and if the President of the United States gets it, that, you know, the, the risk is still there, but we're very confident in our cleaning procedures, that we're doing all that we can to educate, balance educating kids and keeping them safe. Uh, and so, with, and in, during that, since we've come back, we have not had any elementary, uh, cases with students or staff of positive test results. And so, after that three weeks, we were confident in bringing students back. We will continue to watch, monitor the results and continue to work with the Health Department. And if there is a cluster or a community spread in our schools, we will certainly make an adjustment, uh, whether that means closing a classroom or a school or making a district decision. Again, that would be depending on the situation at the time and dealing with the Health Department. Are there any questions? Ms. Knight?
No, sir.
Ms. Messick?
Uh, no, but I would like to say thank you for putting it on the website because that makes, uh, access to all the people in the community, whereas a lot of us, you know, were getting it from, directly from the Health Department. Uh, I think that this will, uh, kind of broaden everybody's, um, view of the positive cases and make, I think it might make people feel better and more confident sending their elementary children to school if they could see results, you know, and is it a daily, is it weekly?
We update it each Monday.
Yeah, it's weekly, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
That's probably good. But anyway, I think it gives people-
We monitor hourly, just about. We monitor the situation hourly, just about.
Okay, at least daily.
But at least daily, if not hourly. But we will update that on, on, on a weekly basis.
Okay, thank you for that.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes, I have two things under relaunch 2020. Um, thank you for putting the information on the website. However, um, can you tell me the reasoning, Dr. Rice, why we are not putting that by school?
Because of the size of our schools, uh, we did not want to breach anyone's confidentiality. Uh, when you have schools that have, you know, 10 staff members in a building and you announce that there's a positive case, it's very easy to look around and see who's missing, and then you've identified their health issues. And so, you know, in test, in the testing world, I believe, uh, less than five is not reported. Uh, a-again, with the size of our schools, that becomes very identifiable in a hurry. So, we made the decision to group them by levels, uh, to protect some anonymity while still telling the story.
Okay, well, the same can be said for the county. Um, because of the size of our county, that school's going to know regardless of who it is. Um, it's going to get out there. So, I would feel more comfortable with listing it by school. So, the parents know, so they can make the most informed decision for their child, whether or not they want to send their child back under Plan B, Plan A, or, or keep them at home under Plan C. I think it is very irresponsible for us not to report that, uh, because what, what are we going to say to the students or staff members who may have been exposed to that positive person? If we are not fully transparent with the school that has it or the classroom that has it, um, how, how responsible is that of us?
I believe it's very responsible in the fact that the Health Department does that. Anyone that, who is test positive, the Health Department has a group of nurses that contacts that person. They do the contact tracing. They then contact everyone who had a close exposure, which is six, within six feet for more than 15 minutes. And then the Health Department contacts them. So, if you, you have been a close exposure, you will get a phone call from the Health Department. And so, you don't have to wonder. If you've not been called, you've not been a close exposure. Uh, and if you get a call, you were a close exposure. So, I, I believe that that is the system we have set up, which is very responsible, and I'm happy to comply with that procedure.
How do we tell the parent whose child has been ex, I don't think that's happening because the parent of the child who I've been in contact with didn't get a call from the Health Department, didn't get a call from the school, of course, didn't get a call from, uh, District Office. This parent, and she doesn't mind that I care of her name, uh, she's a stage four cancer patient right now with an 89-year-old severe asthmatic mother-in-law living with them, and the father is also severely asthmatic. She has told her two students from Plan B and is now doing all Plan C because her child was exposed to one of our positive students. And she had to hear this from the rumor mill and from her child when her child friend said, "I'm so sorry that I have exposed you. I know how sick your mom is." This woman, if she gets sick, her doctors have told her she will not come home from her hospital. How do we live with ourselves if we are not responsible for letting the public know? How do all these other schools get away with, um, announcing it? They have no problem. Our next-door neighbor, Rockingham County, their superintendent's been on the news telling us, um, informing their community of their school's outbreaks and positive cases. They're being fully transparent and forth- They're being fully transparent and forthright. I do not understand this secrecy about it. Um, why can we not be open with the public about this? And of course, we're not gonna name names. I can understand HIPAA. But our students, our staff, and our parents, they have rights too. They have a right to be taught in a healthy environment, and they have a right to be informed of where they work, where they send their kids to school, what the conditions are. I, I just do not understand why we are not doing that.
Well, Ms. Tendrick, like I said in my email, we rely on the Health Department to do their job. Now, in the event your acquaintance didn't get notified, did they ask the Health Department why they didn't? And what was the Health Department's reply?
I do not know whether or not they called the Health Department, but they contacted the school, and the school said that there is not, that they have not been directed to be open to the public about what is going on. And it's much better for us to be open and honest with the community because our schools are getting calls from the community saying, um, "I've heard so-and-so's positive," or that you have a student who is positive. And, and the cases like that that have happened, that is not the case. But that is a false rumor going around. So this is also to squash false information that's going around.
And Ms. Tendrick, the answer to that question is, I'm sorry. But the answer to that question is, I have not seen a positive test result from any of our students or staff members. So anything I would say is based off of somebody else's information, and therefore, in definition, a rumor. And so the Health Department has the list from the state that is shared from each medical facility, entered into a database, which is fed to the Health Department. That's why they do the contact tracing, because they have firsthand knowledge of the positive test results. I don't. Everything, and I know that rumors were spread about my family that were totally untrue and hurtful, and I don't appreciate it. And I'm not gonna lead into that with other families. And so I'm gonna let the Health Department do their job with their accurate information and trust them to do their job. Now, that's my stance as the superintendent. If the Board wants to vote and direct me to do something else, I have the choice to do that or resign, I guess. But, you know, I, but that's my stance at this time unless the Board directs me otherwise.
And, and for the record, and for the record, like I stated in the email, I don't feel like it's our job to try to single out a, a elementary school or a middle school and start a negative rumor or a false sense of aura and gloom and doom. When you look at it, we're less than 1%. We're actually at about a third of a 1% positive cases. So we haven't gotten to the point where an Elkin has to shut down an entire school because they have a community cluster. We have an individual statement. Now, we're in a fluid situation because we've never been through a pandemic while I've been on the Board. But my, my personal opinion is ne- these numbers, we report elementary, we report middle, we report high, in a large number, because if you look at the whole month of September, we had two elementary students, two middle school staff students. And then we're at two different, two of the three, so there's not, we haven't had a, we need to report publicly that this school has a problem because so far, this school doesn't have a problem. This community has had small outbreaks. Now, Ms. Moore, how many, how many employees do we have in Stokes County schools?
I have 900.
So 900, and of which total staff, we've had six? So point six, 6%, and the governor was happy at five, less than five reopening. Uh, s- five, 5,500 students, and we've had 11 in a month. And one of those wasn't even our, wasn't even going to school. They were on Plan C to start with. But I would encourage your, I would encourage your friend, if there's contact tracing, and they've got somebody apologizing, call the, the Health Department and ask them why they weren't notified because that's where the breakdown is. Our job, to me, is to educate. And if there is a problem, handle it at that point. And no other medical conditions do we ever send out notices that this one has it to the website, to the public, to the general in the event, and let's, let's call it honestly, lies happens, Ms. Messing, from time to time. You notify anybody that the child came in contact with. But you didn't notify everybody in the, in the community that this class had an issue. I mean, that's my personal opinion. We can run it back through, Ms. Knight.
So Dr. Rice...
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Tendrick.
Dr. Rice, if you wanted to, you could say that there has been a case at a school. But right at this point in time, you're choosing not to?
I'm choosing to report it by level.
By anybody, um, we're just depending on the Health Department to be the notifier of any cases. Is that, that's what we're saying?
Yes, ma'am. That's who the state has designated to do the contact tracing, is each local Health Department in each county.
I, I understand that it's the Health Department's job to do the contact tracing, but, but I still feel that Stokes County Schools has a responsibility to report the cases by the schools, no matter how many, whatever small percentage of cases that we have. These schools that have had teachers that have been positive, their principal isn't even able to notify the staff that, hey, Ms. Smith, um, tested positive, just wanted y'all to know, picked y'all had close contact with her. They're not even being told that right now. So there is a great level of...
Well, to do that's a direct violation of the HIPAA laws. And that's a federal law, a really big finding, problem.
Okay, well, then they could say we've had a case at our school, but they're not even allowed to say that. That's not breaking HIPAA. And again, we are not bound by HIPAA as far as, we are not a medical provider and we are not a medical biller. So we can't say, we, we can't hide behind HIPAA for everything or that outdated legislation.
Maybe it could be called discrimination. We don't want to go there. Sharing such personal information, correct?
Did you hear me, Ms. Tendrick?
I, I didn't hear the first part, no ma'am.
I just said maybe we could call it discrimination too. You don't want to go there in people's personal information either.
What do you say to... Okay, here is a per instance. This has happened more than once that I've heard of. We have had teachers or staff who know that they have been exposed of possible exposure. They have still come to school. They did not self-isolate. They are still coming to school pending results. But in the meantime, they could have been positive, exposed to a positive case and have therefore possibly died themselves, but they're still coming to this pool and not being as open as they should given the circumstance of the pending results because they feel pressured to come to school when they should be able to call in and say, hey, I need to isolate. I shouldn't be there. And then it's found out by other staff members what's going on, that they shouldn't be there. Teachers, you need to, the teachers and staff, y'all need to keep yourselves accountable. If you, if you see it going on, let each other know because we're not being responsible enough to you. So you guys have to do it yourselves.
Okay, how's that any different than any other communicable disease?
This is different. This is different than...
No, it's a disease that's communicable. Tuberculosis spreads the same way. It's airborne. HIV, blood, bloodborne, but I mean, we don't call out if somebody is HIV po- uh, positive and say, we have these in this school. So now, just to, just to give total fairness and equity, equitable, whatever. We'll poll the Board and see if they will report by school or not, and then the matter's pretty much closed because the Board majority should rule. Ms. Knight?
One quick thing. I mean, I know it's a different perspective and a different situation in a sense, but in the, uh, medical field, you know, working in a hospital, you know, you're, you're potentially, you know, possibly exposed. You're not told of anyone in your direct building, department, anything like that. Um, you mask up and you do what you're supposed to. And if there's any, um, potential exposure, you know, like, like we're doing, you would be notified by the Health Department. If not, you self-monitor. We all have to be, you know, responsible enough that we pay attention to our body and any, you know, potential symptoms. And we do continue with our daily responsibilities and just be self-aware. And I know that's tough, and this is something that none of us have ever dealt with, but, um, that's just all we can do right now.
Ms. Knight, do you think we ought to report it by grade, by school?
Not at this time, not with these minimal numbers, no, sir.
Ms. Messing?
Uh, well, you know, as the Board, we did appoint, as a lot of superintendents asked, to be, um, the one to make the decision during the COVID-19. And, you know, we did appoint, um, Dr. Rice as the one that we would look to for the best advice. And so, you know, he thinks that we, thinks that we should, um, just go by what the Health Department has, um, you know, identified people. And, Dr. Rice, are you saying that if someone in a school has, um, tested positive, that the Health Department will contact?
Yes, ma'am. I've met with the Board of Health. I've talked with Kami Martin on multiple occasions, and they have identified nurses that do the contact tracing. They get information from the state database. They, they have their own personal results. But then Mountain View Medical, different places, they all input that data. The Health Department gets the report. Then they contact that person and start the contact tracing, and then they notify everyone that has been close exposed.
Okay, so say a child was to get it in the elementary school in, uh, say, my brick, you know, if I have one. Uh, what would happen, um, from that point on?
I- if...
If I've got a fourth grader and they tested positive, so what would happen?
If you're the, a parent or the teacher?
No, if I, if it was a child, let's go with the child.
Okay, if there's a child in the fourth grade that tests positive, the Health Department would get that information. They would contact that family and talk about those things. If, and then if they said they were at school, then they would contact the school and talk. They would do the contact tracing. However they do that, they have been given their rules for that. Uh, we have not been given rules for contact tracing. So they follow whatever procedure they have to notify everyone that's been in close contact. Then at that point, they do notify us as well so that we can make sure that that child has not come back to school for a while. And they let us know when they, when they were tested and when they could come back. They let us know that. And so, but again, I've not seen a positive test result, but they, they give us that information as well. So we keep them out of school until their time to return.
And that'd be the same thing for the staff or a teacher or administrator?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's really on the Health Department, isn't it, right?
That is, that is who the state is charged with this responsibility, is the Health Department.
So if someone feels like they don't get the correct information, then they need to contact Health Department and say...
Yes, ma'am.
Why wasn't I contacted?
I don't have access to the database from the state, and I don't have access to the Health Department records. So that's why they have that, because they have the information. I don't. I have secondhand information.
So say I have to go along with that.
And, and the Health Department is the trained medical professional in this case.
Correct.
I, I, yes, I have to go along with that.
Okay. Ms. Tendrick?
Well, you know where I stand. I think we need to be 100% open and honest uh, with our students, staff, faculty, parents, and community of where the positive case has happened so everyone can make the best informed decision for their own health and safety on their loved ones. Because God forbid we become the next Stanley County that happened today. Dr. Rice, you have the authority to do this, and I would hope that you would reconsider.
Okay, and then, again, my, my feelings are, we're in education. We need to treat every student, every faculty, every staff like if they could potentially be a carrier. That's the reason everybody in this room is social distancing and wearing a mask. We are not the health-trained professionals. We have to follow the guidelines of the Health Department and rely on their expertise, their guidance, and their wisdom. So I'm saying we should report in transparency, but also in generality because we don't need a false pandemic reaction, for lack of a better word. We don't need to spread fear. So with that, it's 3-1. Okay, anything else on the relaunch?
Does ma'am share about the grant?
Oh, yes, sir. There is this, yes, sir.
All right, Board members, I just wanted to share with you, um, about the Innovative Childcare and Remote Extended Support Grant. This is something that the state had to come out with, and we, um, I worked last week with Derek Edwards, Terry Fowler, and Lori Wall in writing out this grant. And what it is used for is basically to support learning slide that may have happened during COVID, and then should we need it, childcare for our students. Uh, the grant is for $200,000. And we wrote it out so that if we were on Plan A, we would be looking at doing a nine weeks of after-school, middle-school care to do some extended tutoring opportunities and try to get those students ready for the end-of-grade testing. If we were to have to go to Plan B or Plan C, we would immediately shift the focus of that spending to childcare for elementary students using tutors, Y personnel, kind of all hands on deck to provide care, uh, for our lower-grade students and try to offer learning support to guide them through the platforms and, and do the things that we would need to do. Um, this grant does not require any match from us, but it does require that I get the blessing of the Board. So with that being said, I'd like your permission to go ahead and move forward with applying, uh, for that grant funding. Do you have any questions for me on this particular grant?
Do you need that in the form of a motion or just a consensus?
Um, as long as it's noted in the minutes, I believe we'll be fine to present that.
Ms. Knight, do you have any questions or are you good for it?
Yeah, I'm good. I mean, I'm thrilled for the opportunity, but it focuses on middle. But if the plan changes, it shifts to elementary.
Well, that was just the way that we wrote it. Because if we're in Plan A, we wouldn't need that childcare option.
Right.
And looking at, you know, some of the past with our middle schools, we thought we could really give them a boost and a shot in the arm to handpick the students and really focus on getting students to stand the best chance of growth and, and giving them the additional tutoring and support to try to get those scores up some. But that would only remain if we were in Plan A. If we moved to Plan B or C again, it would shift to childcare.
And how soon could it start?
Um, with this, the Board, uh, this will be decided by the State Board.
Uh-huh.
And that decision will be made in December. I think the funding would possibly drop in January. But what we were looking at was for the last nine weeks. That would give us time to set a plan in place, to hire personnel.
Yeah, that was my next question, is who would help with the tutoring personnel line?
Um, like I said, we would be partnering with Insight and the Y. If we're able to do the after-school program, I sort of hit to this work in like the Quid grant from several years ago, where we use our staff.
Uh-huh.
Um, and, and then we would have a coordinator from one of those two partner organizations to help us out.
Yeah, I think that's wonderful. I mean, I, you know, any additional help during this, uh, difficult time with some distance learning and everything is great. Thank you for this.
We're trying. We're trying.
Thank Ms. Knight, Ms. Messick. Do you have any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for developing a plan to get the grant. And who was it? I got Derek Edwards, Terry Fowler, and...
Lori Wall also works for Insight, and she really helped me out in writing portions of this.
Uh-huh, and then Porshi.
And my point was helpful as well.
Okay. Do you feel good about maybe we get, we'll be accepted?
There are a lot of districts applying for this grant. I'm trying not to get my hopes up too high, but, you know, I really, it'll be a shot in the dark for me to try to guess right now as to whether or not we're going to receive the grant funding or not.
Well, I know a lot of people have, you know, been concerned about how much a child is, how it's, you know, sliding back educationally. And so, and you feel like the big focus should be the middle schools? Is that right?
I do. If we're able to be on Plan A, because we do have, you know, some after-school programs that are being used with our elementary, we don't have an after-school program for our middle schools. So even though this would just be for nine weeks and possibly for a week during the summer, I would like to see that go towards our middle schools just based on some past performance numbers I've seen.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Ms. Tetter, do you have anything to add or questions?
No, no questions for Mr. Rose, but thank you for that report and for what you did, Mr. Rose. I appreciate that very much. But I do have another relaunch-related question when we're done with this.
Okay, I don't have anything else for you then.
All right.
Great job.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Ms. Tetter?
Okay, in light of the previous topic, Dr. Rice, I would like to, for you and Mr. Rogers, to reconsider asking Tammy Martin or inviting her to come speak through the Board at the future meeting, maybe next week, because based on how that discussion went, I think we will have some parents and teachers who are concerned about the lack of reporting by school. And maybe she can answer some questions at the next meeting. But then my other question that I was going to ask was, Dr. Rice, didn't you and I email about students who have or in the ECP program about, not elementary, but middle or high school students? Well, I think that in high school, their separate setting students aren't allowed to come five days. And then my particular question is middle school and those students who might be resource. If the parents are very concerned about the level of instruction or the difficulty that their students are having on their off days, that they are a Plan B student, but they need five days of instruction. This is what the parent feels. And I think you said that it was a principal decision if numbers were low for those schools, that maybe that those students couldn't come five days a week?
I said that they would need to contact their principal, and then they would work with the EC department to determine if, about meeting the students' needs and meeting their IEP. It's not a blanket-level decision to say that all resource comes five days a week or anything like that. It's based on individual needs, and that first call would be to their principal to have that conversation. Ms. Collins, would you like to add anything? If you do, you need to come to the microphone.
Yes, the first step would be to call the principal. It is an IEP team decision, so the team would need to get together and discuss the students' needs. We have encouraged those IEP teams to problem-solve as much as possible around the reasons why things aren't going well and to exhaust those before making any decisions about coming five days a week. But there could be access problems. There could be lots of different things that we could work on to try to change before we switch to five days a week because we are still concerned about the safety of, you know, the security of everyone at school.
Have you had anybody, to the best of your knowledge, request this?
I'm sorry?
Have you had any requests for this service?
Well, it's not a request. It's an IEP team decision. We have had teams to work together to try to figure those things out.
If a parent calls the principal to see if they can do it, then it's a request, so...
They need to have an IEP meeting, and the team decides.
But has that happened?
I have only had maybe two parents call me. Now, principals may have gotten calls that didn't come through me.
All right, Ms. Tetter, do you have any other questions?
So I would just ask this parent to officially request an IEP team meeting to make the decision for their child who's middle school but struggling. They're first grade level on many of their academic...
Yes, ma'am.
And they would really benefit from the five days.
Yes, that would be an IEP team decision to look at what the needs are and to discuss how we can meet those needs.
Right, well, I've, that parent's shared the IEP with me, and I'm agreeing. I'm tending if she chooses to have her child come five days and request it. I understand her concern, and I think we would need to do what a parent feels is best for their child in this case. You all are arguing for other reasons, but I would hope we are not going to give parents a difficult time if they make this request. And again, this is that, one of these schools where we've had a lot of turnaround in the EC departments. It's very difficult to have an informed person on, an informed case manager that's had history with the child since they are just now transitioning from elementary to middle. They haven't had much contact with the students. So the parent is the one who probably knows the best for their child at this point, in this case.
Well, hopefully, the parent will reach out to the principal, and then if they don't get resolution, then they can start up and change.
They have, but I'll ask them to do so again.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, moving on to action then. Approval of the COVID Equality Funding. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the COVID Equality Funding, not Equity Funding.
Equity Funding, yeah. I'm handwriting that.
I just...
I didn't go through Stokes County Schools, so my handwriting, that is good. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Tetter?
Aye.
Personnel and coaching report, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the Personnel and Coaching Report.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Messick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, information announcements.
Board, want to bring to your attention we have some upcoming days off. October the 19th is an optional workday for our traditional schools. November the 3rd, of course, is Election Day. That will be an optional workday throughout the district. And November the 11th, of course, is Veterans Day holiday. Early college, you can see their days off right below that. Please take note that your November the 2nd work session is an 8:30 a.m. meeting. And dropping down, November 5th through the 7th is the North Carolina School Boards Association Annual Conference. Excuse me. That is going to be virtual, if I'm not mistaken. So if you are interested in going, please contact Ms. Boljack so she can help you with that registration process. That's all that I have, unless you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Taylor. This time, need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. I want to thank you all for coming out. Y'all stay safe. Everybody run out behind the Michael Sanders mask. If I could give them to put it here on top of my head, I could wear a full-face ski mask.